Okay, we'll get our meeting started. First, we'll do a pledge allegiance and then move into silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, I need approval of the agenda. Need a motion in a second, please?
No movement.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. And then, now, I need a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the May 21st regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Now, I need a motion in a second for the minutes of the June 4th special board meeting.
No movement. Second.
All those in favor? Okay. At this time, we'll do our spring sports recognition. Mr. Chad Mills will get us started.
So, last month, we did half of our spring sports recognition, and today, we'll do two more sports that we were unable to get to last month, okay? So, we've got some fantastic accomplishments that we get to talk about, and we're going to start that out with girl soccer. Yeah, ladies, you'll come up with her, and then, when Coach Kraus is done talking, you'll go and shake the hands of the board members and say hello.
All right, front and center, get in there. It's your time to shine. All right, so, if you guys don't know anything about soccer, I'm not going to bore you, but it is a sport where there are 11 players on the field at one time. It's a lot of running. If you've ever seen a football field, it's larger than that. Those lines on the edges, those are the soccer field, and so, a lot of times, we joke with the girls, like, um, hello, soccer's running, if they ever, you know, get too tired. But, we have an amazing group of girls who we are so thankful and blessed to have. We have a lot of leaders standing in front of us today. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize those 11 players, but also, you can't run, it's for 90 minutes. You can't run for 90 minutes total and not have a break, not have a rest, and so, we really rely on everybody who's a part of our roster, and we live in a community where, fingers crossed, soccer continues to grow. Our youth programs are super strong. We don't have a ton of numbers in the high school, and so, the work that these girls put in, and I say the running, and I say the lack of subs, because the work that these girls put in, just because they love and enjoy the game, is something that is, it makes us really proud, and we're really happy that we have the opportunity to coach you. Soccer's a difficult sport to learn, and so, you really have to rely on your coaches and listen to your coaches, and these girls do that, no questions asked. And so, I want to recognize the entire group of girls, but I also want to recognize a few players who were honored with some postseason honors. So, we have just a few girls with us tonight, and that is not a shot at the board, it is not a shot at anybody here. These girls are some of the most committed, hard-working, well-rounded girls that I have ever met in my entire life. If they are not here, they're at work, they're at grad parties, they're at college things. These girls are amazing. So, we want to recognize Jocelyn Dennis and Braylee Nichols for their honor of getting all-conference this season. We also want to take a second to recognize Lily Stat and Emily Bauer and Red, why am I blanking on your real name? Jocelyn, Jocelyn Grimes. We want to recognize Jocelyn Grimes as well for being all-district. So, if you guys would give these girls a hand, if you guys would shake the board's hand and tell them thank you, thank you, thank you, we really appreciate it.
Coach Stone and the track team, come on up.
Well, Mr. Mills, how would you like me to do this?
I would say in front of this stage, and then afterwards later, I'll come up and go around.
Okay, that sounds great.
They just want to line up in front.
Sure. Okay. Track folks, line up up front there if you can. I know you've got it.
Yep, I've got it. Thank you so much.
Line up, line up. Yeah. Right in front of you.
Yeah, I've got something, with a couple of extra notes on it. You can just go ahead and handle those guys. I have, I have brought my trusted assistant, Coach McIntyre, here this evening to help me hand out a couple of things as I do this, because as has been the case quite a bit in recent years, we've had some really nice track seasons, and, and that has led, that has led this to be a little bit more extensive, maybe, than is traditional. So, I'll, I promise I'll do my best here, guys. Obviously, I always want to start with a thanks to Mr. Mills, who continues to support our program in any way we need, to the board, Dr. Gibbs. We thank you guys for all of your assistance and help and support along the way. We, we don't, we don't always like to necessarily wait until the June meeting to do this, because we know we're going to have kids on vacation and things like that. But, the, the May meeting happens before our state championship meet, and so, I try to wait till after that is done, so I can make sure to mention those folks who competed at the state championships. We knew coming into this season that we felt like we had a chance for it to be a really special year, and as soon as we got going, the, the evidence was there, just in terms of numbers. We have, we've worked really hard to grow our track and field program, and this year, we ended up with just under 140 kids on the high school track team, and it was right about 68 to 70 boys and 68 to 70 girls. That's about, about five times what it was years ago when Coach McIntyre and I very first started coaching. So, we've gotten a lot of support from these kids, and I thank all the kids and their families for, for supporting us in that journey. This year, from a team standpoint, the boys won their fifth consecutive M-A-A conference title. The girls won their seventh consecutive M-A-A conference title, and a super crazy stat, going back a real long time, for Farmington Girls Track and Field. This goes way back to when I was in high school and the Willis Gunder era, but in the last 35 seasons, the Farmington girls have won the M-A-A conference title 32 times, and that is a pretty extraordinary statistic. It definitely speaks volumes about the young ladies who keep coming out and competing for the Farmington Track Program. This year, our boys had the highest finish in program history at the state championships. We finished sixth at the Class Four State Meet, so we were very excited about that, and we keep pursuing that dream of a top-four finish on the podium, so we'll, we'll go back to work and try to get that next year. What I'm going to do here tonight, I will, I'll just mention a name and the honors that they earned. Kids, if you would, just kind of raise your hand, so the folks out there and these folks back here know who I'm talking about, if you are here. And I'll, I'll start with the boys first. Judge Obashon was all-conference in one event this year. Owen Barron was all-conference in one event and all-district in one event. Alex Beckett is in Florida right now, but he was all-conference in one event and all-district in one event. Parker Brooks, who's here with us. Parker was all-conference in two events, all-district in one event, and is a part of our new four-by-100-meter relay school record-holding team. Axton Bruni was all-conference in two events and was academic all-state. You want to go ahead and just kind of work our way through those as we do it. Nikolai Kane. Nikolai was all-conference in two events and all-district in one event. Brett Dry. Brett is, is one of the real stars of our track program. This year, Brett was all-conference in five different events. He was all-district in four different events, and was the district champion in the triple jump, as well as also being a part of our new school record-holding four-by-100-meter relay team. Coy Fripp, one of our freshman sprinters, was all-conference in two events and all-district in one event. Evan Fuller, who is, who is also in Florida right now, he had a pretty incredible season, one of the longest lists of postseason honors I've had. Evan was all-conference this year in six different events. He was all-district in four events, including being the district champion in the 800 meters. He was all-state in three separate events, including being the state champion in the 800 meters and the 1600 meters both, two events that happen only about 85 minutes apart from each other at the state meet, and Evan is also academic all-state. Hunter Hastings was all-conference in one event. Kayden Kimbrough, who is off doing his National Guard service at this time, was our conference champion in the 3200-meter run. Bryson Logan, who's here with us tonight, one of the, one of the elite hurdleers in the state of Missouri, was all-conference in three separate events, was all-district in three separate events, including being the district champion in the 110-meter hurdles, and Bryson was all-state, finishing fourth in the state of Missouri in the 300-meter hurdles. Bryson also broke our school record this year in the 300-meter hurdles, and came back and then broke it again the very next week. Nick McAllister was all-conference in one event and all-district in one event. Josh McCarthy. Josh came out, was a first-time track athlete this year and had a pretty incredible season. He was all-conference in four separate events, was a part of the school record four-by-100-meter relay team. He was all-district in three events, qualified for state in two separate events, and just this past weekend, was super exciting for me, Josh became the first Farmington Track athlete ever to compete in Philadelphia at the Nike New Balance National Meet. Kason McLean was all-conference in one event and all-district in one event. Dustin Randazzo was all-conference in three events, all-district in two events, and was academic all-state. Wyatt Scott was all-conference in one event and was our district champion in the pole vault this year. Baylor Vaw was academic all-state. Zane Wood was all-conference in one event, and Sam Woodson was all-conference in two events and was academic all-state. I'm going to move on to the girls now. Shelby Bowling was academic all-state. Addison Brennicky was all-conference and all-district. Addison broke the school record this year in the Discus, a record that was set my senior year of high school, and I am 50. So, that, that record was due for breaking, and so, we were pretty excited when she got that one. Lizzie Bergen was all-conference in one event, was all-district in two events, and will be continuing her running career next year in cross-country and track at Missouri Baptist. Ava Cooper was all-conference in two events, was all-district in one event, and was academic all-state. Anna Cox was academic all-state. Cadence Dunn was all-district in one event and academic all-state. Colvin Fallis was all-conference in one event and academic all-state. Natalie Gammon was academic all-state. Avery Graham was all-conference in one event. She was district champion in that same event of the javelin, and she was all-state, finishing third at the state championships in the javelin this year, as well as being academic all-state. Miranda Hale was academic all-state. Nia Hayward was academic all-state. Kate Jinkerson was all-conference in four events this year, was all-district in three events this year, and was academic all-state. Caroline Klump was academic all-state. Hannah Mathis was all-district in one event and was academic all-state. Cayman McIntyre, is not with us this evening, but she was all-conference in one event and was academic all-state. Hazel Parrott was injured a lot of the year, but came back late and finished very strong. She was all-conference in one event, she was all-district in two events, and was all-state, finishing seventh in the state championships in the high jump this year as a freshman. Ella Scott was all-conference in one event, was all-district in one event, and was academic all-state. Madeline Shipley was all-conference in three events, was the district champion in the two-mile, all-district in two separate events. Grace Schubert was all-district in two events. Kenley Walden was all-conference in one event and was academic all-state. Clara Wilkins was all-conference in one event and was academic all-state. I also want to take just a minute, as I always do here, to hand out, it's really the only opportunity I have, to hand out our Hale Memorial MVP Award, the traditional end-of-season award for boys and girls track and field at Farmington. Our girls MVP this year, we had a really tight battle between two freshman girls for our MVP this year. It was very close all year. Ultimately, it was won by just a very narrow margin by a young lady who did what we call, completed the all-conference distance quad this year, earning all-conference honors in the 800 meters, the mile, the two-mile, and the four-by-800-meter relay. She qualified for the state championships in two different events. Our girls Hale Memorial MVP Award goes to freshman Kate Jinkerson. Come up afterwards, Kate, we'll do a picture. Our boys MVP award does not carry a lot of drama this year. I think every one of these kids standing up here expects correctly that our boys MVP award this year is going to go to Evan Fuller, but I want to take just a minute, even though Evan isn't here. Evan is in Florida on a well-deserved vacation right now, but I, I have to take just a minute to talk very briefly about the uniqueness of Evan Fuller's time running for the Farmington Knights. Over the course of Evan's four years of running for us, he earned, he set six school records in the 800 meters, a record he broke five times, the 1600 meters, the 3200 meters, the cross-country 5K, and two separate relays. Over the course of his four years in high school, he earned eight state medals, and I've done a little research, there's something I might have missed somewhere, but I don't think so. I am about 98% certain that Evan Fuller's eight state medals in his four-year high school career is more state medals than any athlete in any sport in Farmington history has ever earned. He is the only multiple-time state championship, state champion in the history of Farmington Track and Field, and a couple of weeks ago, I was talking to Josh Hain, and he, he asked me if there was, if there was a Mount Rushmore of Farmington Track and Field, where on there would Evan Fuller be? And I said it would, he would, he would be alone on that mountain. There is, there is no other athlete in the school, in school history of our sport that has achieved the kind of success and the level of dominance that Evan has, and it just makes it that much better knowing here in just a couple of weeks, probably the, the most exciting part of this school year was when Evan came in and let me know that he had just gotten a call from Representative Jason Smith, letting him know that he had been accepted into West Point, which is a pretty cool thing. So, he'll be leaving in a couple of weeks for that, and so, we want to, tonight, Evan's mentors, Tom and Ruth Christman, are here, and we want to present his MVP award to them. Okay, I'm done. Let's have you guys come up and make the rounds up here, and we want to take some pictures as well. Yeah, 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 line up, line up, take a couple, break that regulation.
Hey, Coach Stone? Hey, Coach Stone? Hey, Jerry? Coach Stone?
Yes, sir.
Did you guys just miss out on fourth place by five points?
We did. We just missed out, and Bryson got this fourth, district leader. He was a contender, we probably would have gotten there if he had, if he'd gotten through.
That's what I thought, how I read it.
Yeah, it was razor-thin margin.
You missed one point out of fifth place, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yup.
Just get in there, kind of in between, just feel where your face can be in between.
Yeah, there you go. Just kind of poke your...
I think we can get in here.
Going to what?
Start running with them?
Oh. I'm not fast enough for that.
Maybe, 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 maybe you get on the bicycle.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll continue on. You see on the information, a financial report by Ms. Houston on the procedure and updates. Information, you have that, and then our policy updates, EHBD and GDBC, GDBDA. I need a motion in a second to approve those policies, please. All those in favor? Okay. This time, under essential agenda, Mrs. Conley?
All right, so, I was just going to go over and give you guys a little bit more information that was in the presentation from this evening. So, Daisy Baker Learning Center currently serves students in grades three through 12 in four different programs for students that just need something a little different and some individualized support. At any one time, there are approximately 70 to 100 students at Daisy Baker. During the 2023-2024 school year, we served 131 students. Some of them were there short-term, many were from 10 days all the way until the entire school year. Students, this is not a one-size-fits-all option. Students are placed there for a variety of reasons, from attendance, academics, behavior, and social-emotional needs. The needs of our community are ever-changing, and so, we are serving more students than ever, and constantly changing what we are doing to make sure that we are serving the students appropriately. So, going over some of our programs, because sometimes people think that when students go to Daisy Baker Learning Center, that everybody is just kind of there for the same reason and the same program, getting the same supports, and that is not the case at all. So, our PACE program, PACE stands for Purpose, Academics, and Character in Education. So, students in that program are in grades seven through 12, and they are there for a variety of reasons. We use a blended learning model with Edge Annuity as our guide to make sure that we are using the curriculum appropriately, and then try to do blended learning lessons with hands-on activities, et cetera. The Missouri Option Program allows students who are at least 17 years of age and at risk of dropping out to graduate in a different method. So, basically, what they have to do is, they take the HIGHSET, which Missouri has deemed the equivalency test for high school, and if they've met the prerequisites and they pass the HIGHSET test, then they can actually graduate with their cohort. This school year, we had 19 students successfully pass the HIGHSET test, and those students otherwise would not have graduated without this option. Night school, as we always joke, because when I offer this to students, they're like, "Night, I don't want to go to school at night." I'm like, "No, no, no, we are the Farmington Knights." So, traditionally, students are in grades 11 through 12, they're behind their cohort and credits. Usually, those students move into the Missouri Option Program, but not always, and this just kind of gives them a different pathway with smaller class sizes and individual supports. We have two different day treatment programs. We have had the elementary day treatment program for several years. We partner with BJC Behavior. We partner with BJC Behavioral Health to serve students just our high needs with a variety of supports. It is very individualized. There is a therapeutic component during the school day. So our elementary program serves students in grades three through eight. And then Cory, if you go to the next slide. Our secondary program serves students in grades nine through 12. The whole premise of it is similar. Obviously, we just want to keep students separate based on grade levels, but they receive case management services, therapy supports, and then the direct line of communication to their psychiatrist. We try to give them a variety of supports throughout the school day with the hope that they can gain the skills that they need to go back to their domicile building and be successful in a traditional school classroom. We also provide the academic services to the Juvenile Detention Center, which works with the 24th Circuit, and that is a very non-traditional model. But during this school year, we served 76 students in this capacity. We try to give our students an opportunity to do things a little outside the box and also give back to their community. So a couple of years ago, CTA cares, our CTA came to me with an idea, and it's kind of just grown and expanded, and many, many more people have become involved in putting their hands in this, and it's great. And CTA cares, they help pack bags to provide food to students on the weekends and extended breaks who otherwise may not have had those things and would have been hungry. So we really try to give our students an opportunity to be a part of this and really give back, and they are involved in packing those bags on a weekly basis. As I think of, I'm constantly thinking about, okay, what are some things that we can do for our community as a whole as we're looking at expanding and changing and things of that nature? In our HICE program, our Missouri Option Program that uses the HICE test is really beneficial to a lot of our students in our community as a whole. But when we look at it, it has to be an approved accredited testing site. And in our area, we use MAC traditionally, just because it is close. However, they really only offer two testing dates each month, and they're the last week of the month. So we use CMO in Cape Girardeau, we also use Jefferson College in Hillsborough, but sometimes the transportation really is a concern to our students and people of our community. So MAC is predominantly used. However, if students are ready to test the first of the month and have to stay throughout the entire month, it really makes it tricky, or possibly there aren't enough testing sites if people in the community are using those spots. So dreaming of the future, I would love to, for the Farmington School District, to offer a HICE testing facility throughout our campuses. I'm not really sure what that looks like yet, but we have started looking into that to see if that's something that we could possibly do that could serve our students here at Farmington. And then those are some of the things. We are constantly trying to get our community involved and have our parents and things come in. We like to do activities with students and staff in the bottom right-hand corner. We've started offering more course offerings that are a way for edgenuity in getting students to do things. You can see a lot of the art projects that are also a therapeutic component, and we try to showcase those in the hallways of Daisy Baker. You can see that in the bottom middle, and then you can see that in the top left. Students did a collaborative project that was a kindness tree, and they paper-mache this giant tree, and it was a collaborative project with people across different programs and grade levels. Then they went around and they said, "What does kindness look like to you?" And they hung all of these tags all over the tree, and it is actually displayed in the foyer of Daisy Baker. And there's been a couple of pictures throughout the programs, but then kind of the top middle you can see, we've really looked at expanding our courtyard the last couple of years. So if you haven't been to Daisy lately, I really highly recommend that you come over and see, we have some raised beds that the students take care of, there's a pond with koi fish in there, there's flowers and things like that that just allow the students to get outside and get some fresh air and just learn in a different capacity, and they've really taken a lot of ownership over that being their space, and they do a great job of taking care of things. So, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if we have no more discussions, I need a motion and a second to approve the consensual agenda. Second, all those in favor? Okay. And now they have the superintendent's report. Gibbs?
Right, good evening. And so, just realizing that this is my 12th regular meeting, so I've turned a corner. So next month will be marking my second year, so thanks for all the support of this board and the community who's listening to this board meeting out there. I'm sure it's very riveting. So just wanted to highlight, a lot of diligent work to wrap up the school year, and I really feel like we had a good closeout to the school year. Our new leaders have been jumping right in with teacher and team meetings, so that's exciting to see. Crystal and I are working closely on, just along with Terry's help and Christie's help, finalizing the end-of-the-year expenditures and evaluating any remaining revenue that's coming in. So we'll have that for you in a couple of weeks when we have our end-of-the-year budget meeting and review. And then we're wrapping up grant funding for many grants that wrap up this time of year. And then already looking to next year, so it's a busy time of the year in our office and for the administrators that are on 12-month contracts to just really be proactive in the work that is going into preparing for next year. This week, there's curriculum work going on for the elementary and up through middle school grade levels with Amanda Sheets and Mrs. Turner working with those groups. A lot of planning went into that. So career ladder is underway with people already working through the summer to accrue those hours. Nearly all staff participated in that, so looking forward to seeing how that impacts our students through the tutoring program and the professional growth that's encouraged through that for our certified staff. We work kind of a different angle on our climate and culture surveys this year with putting a numeric value on the Likert scale to each of those, so we were able to analyze that data in a different way. We looked at it at our end-of-the-year admin meeting. We're looking at an executive meeting, share that out with the staff, and then also with parents and students as we look to make improvements there and adjustments. One thing I want to note a little bit is when Senate Bill 727 passed, it had various repercussions that'll kind of trickle down through education for the years to come. And one of those that's more immediate is trying to adjust the attendance days across the state of Missouri to discourage any more schools from moving to four-day week, and putting in a stipulation of saying they want 169 attendance days, and we adopted a calendar at 168 days. So as a team, we're processing what to do with that, if we are adding a day, and then it also would make it very difficult to have traditional snow days where we don't have some kind of online requirement taking place because there is a 1% extra payment that would follow, not this year, but the next year, if we have 169 attendance days, and then that would go to 2% after a couple more years. So that would have a financial impact of extra money that our district would get if we can meet that attendance requirement. So we're trying to process what to do with that, as are the area schools. I've not worked with area schools on how we are trying to navigate that decision that was made as part of that bill. Summer school was a huge success. Shout out to Mrs. Turner and her team for thinking outside of the box and making that more engaging and keeping attendance up. And then the high school program continues to run through this week. And then already kind of commented on the budget and what we're looking at, so we'll have more numbers coming up in a couple of weeks as we look through that. And then Mindy is running the cameras at BKTV today, tonight, so that's where she's at, but she has really worked hard on our new website, and that was really a seamless transition attributed to the hard work that her and Cory did. And we're getting a lot of good feedback on how that has rolled out. And then the summer is, she's working on getting the print magazine out that will have information about this past school year, the upcoming school year, and then the bond, potential bond and levy issue that we're looking at for the April. And then lots of great things going on in technology you can see there, so appreciate the hard work that really gets underway for that team. That's their all hands-on-deck time to deploy all the technology changes. And then you can see Josh's department having a very busy summer, trying to get projects going across the district, and some of them regular maintenance, and then some of them proactive in their approach. So a busy time of year, but a productive time of year, so I just appreciate my team and all that we've accomplished over this past year, and looking forward to an even better year coming up.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gibbs. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss personnel pursuant to 610.021, paragraphs 1, 3, 13, and 14.
Have a second?
Second.
Real call?
Freeman?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Hay?
Howard?
Yes.
Hillwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.